I'll call to order the Wednesday, March 30th Town Council Committee of the Hall Special Meeting at 6:03. We will be continuing our budget deliberations. We have Town Clerk, Planning and Development Services, Parks and Rec, Shenandoah Golf Course, and Recreation and Senior Activities. And we will begin with Town Clerk can be found on page 57 of your Budget Book. And we have our Town Clerk, Betsy McCausch, here with us. Welcome.
Good evening.
Just one second, sorry. I forgot, we have to put the number on the floor first. I'll move $347,641.
Second, Cassiri.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Cassiri. Okay, thank you.
Well, good evening again. We see each other quite often these days. And it's my pleasure to present my budget. It's lean, mean, and it's the way it is. So you'll notice, get right to the crux, the increases are all because of, I want to say, greed. Not in a mean term, but everything that has increased, so postage has really gone up considerably. But paper, horrendous uptick on paper. And boy, oh, boy, this office has minimized the amount of paper that we use. But in comparison to what we've cut down, the price has gone up 50% on our archival paper, which we're contracted by the state statute that we have to use, what the State's Department of Vital Statistics tells us to use. So that's why we have a huge, you know, you see the increase in our operating. And of course, personnel budget is based on the contract that we're under right now for my employees. I have four employees, and they're all under one union. Let's see, any highlights that you might be interested in? Nothing that you can reflect in dollars and cents, but because it's not costing the town anything, the highlights that we're doing in our office. We've recently contracted with a company for online ordering of vital records. And this can be done right in town, Town Hall. We have a QR code, zippity-doodah, and they can use their credit cards. So you can order your record from home, ask us to hold it for you, and you'll pick it up. It really works quite well. And that doesn't cost the town anything, except for labor, of course. But no resources as far as, you know, we're not mailing anything. So that's the newest proposal. And as of next week, we'll have a new program. It was a one-time charge, which I used funds that we collect that are used for record retention. And that is for marriage application online. We currently have our worksheet online, but it's not connected to a database or anything in the office. It's just something that you could print out, fill out at home, bring in. Now we'll have, you fill out the application, and that directly will go to a system that will create the marriage license. It's quite unique. No, it is to us, anyway. Not to everybody else who has it. So it's a company called Cot, C-O-T-T, Systems, which they also handle our land records. And they're based in Columbus, Ohio. But they're all over the country.
Very good, thank you. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Town Clerk, for being here. I'm just looking at the finance, financing plan area on page 58, and looking at the recording instruments. So first, just what are the recording instruments? And then in 2022, it jumped quite a bit, and then came back down again. So what are the recording instruments?
So recording instruments are the pages that we record in land records. So if you have a two-page document, that's two instruments. And we retain a dollar per instrument.
I'm not sure.
So if you have a two-page document to record in our office, the Town Clerk keeps money for each page. And that comes into this financing plan. So the state gets a portion, and the town keeps a portion.
Okay. So why did it go up so much?
Oh, well, when we had COVID 2020, which is 2021 for here, interest rates were almost at zero, or sometimes they were at zero. And so we had a huge influx of recordings. So people were either refinancing or purchasing new, or it was pretty amazing.
People were taking the opportunity to change their mortgages, to change everything. So your workload went up quite a bit.
Right. The homeowner wouldn't see something because it's all electronic, but our office sees it.
Your office does, okay. And it came back down because interest rates have gone back up, and people aren't doing those things anymore?
There you go. Same thing for conveyance fees. You'll see, it fluctuates all over. It has to do with.
I mean, most of these are fairly stable. It kind of stays somewhere.
We've seen it bounce up to, you know, 1.5 million before, so.
Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Thank you, Town Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Town Clerk, for joining us this evening. Having reviewed a good chunk of the budget already, and certainly everything on the agenda this evening, I couldn't help but notice that I think you are one of the few town employees that won't be getting any form of a raise. In fact, technically, we'll be making a little bit less than you earned during this fiscal year.
Do you want me to comment?
Yes.
I really can't comment on previous years because my, like you said, my salary hasn't changed since I became Town Clerk and took office in 2010. Saying that, it's up to the council to set the salary for the Town Clerk and the Town Manager. He's a little different. He has a contract with you. I'm elected by the people. But instead of keeping fees that I would be able to keep according to statute, the town gives me a salary.
Mayor Verne?
Just to mention, you can only legally change the salary after the first two years of a term. That's how the statute's written.
Yeah, I've never spent the time on that, Town Manager, but I know that was designed for state representatives, so I don't know if it applies to. I understand what you're saying, but I haven't explored it because there's history of this office being reviewed. It doesn't matter. That's not important right now. I answered your question, though.
Well, I think that is something we should certainly clarify. I know in several towns that do have an elected clerk's position, some of them are actually two-year terms. So I'd be curious how that would apply to those individuals. But assuming that is the case, is there anything our council can do this evening to rectify that situation? And in large part, because, again, you've been Town Clerk for how many years?
This is my 12th year.
12th year. And how long have you earned a salary of the stated amount of $69,000?
12 years.
12 years, so no increase.
No.
I don't think any other town employee can say the same thing, so.
I don't know. I don't know. But I don't know if this is a discussion for now, or at a town meeting, other than a budget session, you know.
Well, I feel strongly you've earned a raise. And I want to say that on the record. If we are to be hamstrung truly because of state, because of a state statute, you know, I understand we don't have a lot of wiggle room, but if we could, I would certainly move a number to, I think, to recognize that you have been a clerk for several years now and have done good work for our community. And I think you've earned it, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Bordaln?
Thank you. Just to piggyback off of that, I guess my question is for the Town Manager. What is the process? When preparing this budget, is there something that we should maybe talk to with the council and set up an appointment ahead of time so that we can kind of maybe put in some, you know, recommendations prior to, so when you submit your budget, it's kind of in here? A few selections? I'm just curious, because I feel like unfortunately, it seems like something that falls under the radar. And, you know, it's, you know, town official, unfortunately, town elected officials up here change every two years possibly. And I could see where that could get kind of lost in the weeds a little bit. So we need, in some way, I think there should be some way where a town staff member is monitoring that, so when new council come on, and the budget happens every year, that there's a way that we're kind of following that, so to speak. So is there any incentive that you can do to help the council with that?
Well, generally speaking, this budget's got to be what I think the needs are. I'm not going to start meeting beforehand. But if you remember, the Town Clerk had sent the request to the council. In the last couple of years, the council did not take it up. So that request has come, been sent out, at least to the mayor. So I can look up past practice, and we can, pretty confident about the two years, though.
Right. So again, as you stated, this is the budget that you feel is the best. So it would be helpful, then, if you maybe added a line or a way to vote on something, and the council can choose to take it up or not. So maybe before the budget, since you guys work in the same building, there might be an email that you would send maybe to the Town Clerk, saying, you know, if you want me to submit something to the council for this year, maybe that's done in the process of while you're doing the budget? Is that possible?
I think it's done more, yeah.
Yeah, we do it for every department, yeah.
And was that submitted this year?
No, because you can't do it in two years. I can look up past practice. I can tell you, you can't do it right now. But I'll look up past practice, and then the council does a review. There's a past practice to it. Now, the review is not required by statute. That's just something the council has chosen to do. So that could be waived. But we'll look at statute. But yeah, I mean, she can always bring, every department brings to me what they want for the department. And you would see, if I changed it, you would see what they request, and then if I made any changes.
I guess, so I guess that would be great to have put into this budget, like to say that if there is some form of statute that has looked at prior to, and that's included, so we kind of know. And then also, if she did submit, or he submitted, whoever submitted, that was the clerk at that time, that then that's kind of added in, and then some message that you're not, you know. But nothing in here stating, that's the first I'm hearing, is there's a statute issue. And so that would be helpful to kind of know that when we're reviewing this.
I have explained it to the council with you there before, but that's okay. I can't say what's, unless it's requested and I then turn it down, that's when I could give a statute. But everything's covered by statute, so I can't list all the statutes. You know, if there's a request and it doesn't fall in statute, I could put that in there. But typically, the request goes directly to the council anyways.
So there was no request made in this year for our budget?
No.
Thank you.
Counselor McBride?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question regarding conveyance tax, because I'd like to know if it was possible to receive the 1999 and the 2000 number, because those numbers seem somewhat conservative to me coming off the last two years of, you know, 780, and now, you know, now we're bringing it back to the 600 or so. I wonder if there's any more increased revenues we could change going forward, because we are at a point, I think, where we don't need a budget, we're going to make changes. I think that maybe one or two grab some revenue. And with that being said, I'd like to touch upon something that's been discussed before. Groton is only one of three distressed municipalities in Connecticut that doesn't take any increase in the past.
Point of order.
Your connection's unstable. We can't really hear you.
We can't understand.
Can you just repeat what you were saying before, so we can see?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah. I apologize. My question is on the conveyance.
Yeah, we still can't hear you.
I can answer the conveyance, but the other question, the other side, we didn't hear.
Right. Yeah, your connection's still unstable. But.
Okay, I'm going to put something in the chat if that's acceptable? Could I put something in the chat?
What if I didn't read it out loud?
If you read it out loud into the record, then I'd be all right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'll do that. I'll just work on that right now.
So his question about the conveyance, and I think, I think I can touch on this. You know, the town was designated as a distressed municipality. And with that distinction, the town can increase the town portion of the recording fee. Now, you know, the previous council didn't want to do that. Although, I mean, it was a mixed bag of, not everybody voted for it, and not everybody voted against it, but the overwhelming. That's your prerogative. We can discuss that anytime. It's, we did have this increase some years back, and I didn't see any complaints. It's just people want to know what they're supposed to do. That was the only issue we had, is what's the conveyance? What's the town conveyance? The state hasn't changed, but the towns that are distressed can change. And it's a quarter of a percent. That's the increase. One quarter of a percent.
Thank you. Has Counselor McBride entered his chat yet? No? Okay. So while we wait for that, we'll move on to Counsel Franco.
He just showed up before.
Okay, sure. Let's do it.
If the conveyance revenue is too low, based on prior year's actual, that's the question. I don't know if there's supposed to be comment. More importantly, Groton is one of the only three distressed communities in Connecticut that does not take advantage of the .25 increase. I think we should consider that, so it's more of a statement.
It was exactly what I was saying.
Right.
But, you know, our conveyance fees fluctuate anyway. It's just has to do with the amount of value of property, if it has conveyance, you know.
Thank you. Counsel Franco?
Thank you. So going forward, it is the council's responsibility to do your review. Is that correct?
Nothing about a review. It's a salary. You set the salary. There's no review.
But if there was a review, we would be doing your review?
If the council chose to. I don't, it's been mostly past practice, but I don't think it's required in any way.
Well, it was called a review, but there's not really a review.
I do remember voting on an increase, and there was some kind of issue. Did that not go through?
I think this council did, not this council, but a council, did try to put a, during the budget, and I don't know what happened.
Right.
We allocated the funds for an increase for your pay.
I remember that, yeah.
And?
Oh, I remember. Oh, I remember exactly what happened. The Finance Department said it had to be in the form of a resolution, which, sad to say, that is not true. That might be past practice, but there's no law that says that that has to happen. So that was, that was a mistake.
So this may be a topic that doesn't have to come up during budget season.
No, it can be done at any time.
You could do it now, you could do it later.
Anytime, no?
So this is not?
Oh, no, depending on the two years, though.
So as we do the, let's just say, the Town Manager's review, and if we would change salary or benefit of any sort for him, we don't do it at budget time, the same thing could be said for yours as well. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Counsel Bordaln?
So if there was money allocated for the Town Clerk under the last budget, is what I'm hearing, and I'm trying to remember back, unfortunately, my memory sometimes is not always great. But it wasn't allocated, what, where are the, like, where did that decision, so it has to be in a form of a resolution, and the funds were just, were never moved out of an account? Is that what happened?
I'd have to look back into it. It's been too long.
So it just stayed in the general fund, or?
I'd have to talk to the Finance Director and look back at past notes. I doubt she knows off the top of her. Cindy, do you remember anything about that?
Good evening, everyone. I don't remember that specific, with the Finance Department saying that we would not honor that. I will say that it had always been past practice that there was a review done of Town Clerk, and the council passed a resolution setting the percentage increase. And that was always, I believe, was always effective January 1st of each year. The review or evaluation, whatever you want to call it, was to be done in December, but then affected date of January 1st. I can go back and look when I'm back in the office, and can get some history on those, if you'd like. The example that, though, that I don't recall what might have happened with an increase that was vote, that was voted on that was not applied.
We'll, we'll.
There's a couple emails.
Right. My other question would be then for Mrs. Landry, then, the, are you aware of this two-year statute from past practices, looking at the budget?
No, I'm not aware of that. I would have to review that. I know that did come up last year, the voter registration, and, but no, I'm not familiar with that statute.
So yeah, if you do submit any information to us about that, if you happen to see that two years, you know, wait or whatever's being stated, that would be helpful to see the pattern of these raises that were given and the hold times. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right. I got a question in the chat from Counsel McBride.
One second. I pulled up. Question in administration, is now the best time for council to consider increasing the conveyance tax to reconcile with the budget? I think that's a larger discussion.
Way bigger.
Yeah.
Yeah, Counsel McBride, I don't think we can do that at this time.
That's a subject on, it should be an item on its own.
Counsel Franco.
If he's inquiring about the distressed community, that has been decided, and it has to wait a year to come back without six councilors voting to bring it back, because it has been a decided issue.
True.
Just a, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Baumgartner?
I believe he was just referring to the revenue line, because there is existing conveyance tax revenues that the Town Clerk's office collects. But I think he was pointing to.
Oh, he said the next few weeks. He meant the actual add-on amount.
Yeah. So the 600,000 amount.
Yeah, it wouldn't be an additional $100,000, Counsel Baumgartner. It wouldn't.
So before we could put it on the agenda, it would take six council members requesting it to be on the agenda, I guess.
All right, so we've gone through two rounds of, we've gone through two rounds of speaking. Do I have consent from the council to have a third round?
Yes.
Okay. I see four yeses. Counsel Westerville, that's a yes? Okay. Counsel Bordaln?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Just for me, it's a little, I mean, I can understand some folks want to be remote, and, but I think for the budget, I mean, if the cameras are on, I mean, this was brought up before, and if you're having connect issues under other meetings.
You have to.
I want to make sure that it's legal, that we're actually able to be doing chat. We were told in other council meetings that we could not use the chat.
Counsel Bordaln?
So I just want to make sure that we're following proper protocol with that and FOI, because it's really hard to follow if, you know, I can't see the typed written comments, the Town Manager's reading them, and it slows down the meeting.
Counsel Bordaln? Our comments need to be related to the budget.
That is related to the budget.
Okay.
It's hard to follow, and we're not to use the chat.
All right. So before I vote, I'll just state, my mother works in this department, so I'll be abstaining from the vote. And we will doing a roll call vote. All in favor of $347,641? Counselor Bordaln, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counsel Baumgartner?
Aye.
Counsel Cassiri?
Yes.
Counsel Franco?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel McBride?
Yes.
Counsel Parker? Oh, she's not here. Counsel Westerville?
Aye.
Okay. And Melendez will be abstaining. That carries seven in favor, zero opposed, one abstaining, Melendez.
I want to thank you all for your attention to our budget, and I'll be sending you some screenshots of new things, so you can see, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Take care.
Okay, on to Planning and Development Services, 1046, can be found on page 126. I'll make a motion for $1,618,196, so I'll move.
Second, Bordaln?
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Bordaln. And we have Director Reiner here to speak to his budget.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. So very briefly, our budget increase this year is just a 1.4% overall increase. The majority of that increase is in personnel expenses that are mostly due to contractual increases. As all of you know, this year, we did add the ARPA Coordinator position to the department, but that is a fully reimbursable position. Our operating expenses are down this year by a little over $12,000. Our contractual inspectors went down. Some of our economic development professional services have gone up. We did allocate $6,000 in that line item for background checks in case those are needed in the future, as well as some website maintenance for $3,000. Our professional development, development and training line item went up a little bit because we didn't really have much outside or in-person meetings for economic development or any type of professional development, I should say, training. And happy to answer any questions. Not that exciting of a budget for us this year.
Counsel Cassiri?
Hi, Mr. Reiner. Just curious why the operating expenses decreased?
This year, we were not proposing to work on any new major plans or initiatives that were not covered already via our CIP. As you know, we're working on the Mystic Parking Study. Pretty soon, we'll be releasing an RFP for our Climate Action Plan. We did receive an $85,000 grant from the Long Island Sound Futures Fund for a climate and resiliency study for downtown Mystic. So those are the types of planning activities, our economic development studies, that we're normally doing out of operating, and because some of those are either covered in CIP or through grant funds, and dealing with the ARPA program this year, that's taking up a significant amount of staff time.
Great, thank you. And the personnel services for the $34,426 is strictly contractual, or is there anything more to that?
No, there's the contractual raises, and then the increase that the manager put in the budget for any of the non-union staff. But the majority of it, I think, $29,000 or so is all the contractual changes.
And was the addition to the non-union staff to give them comparable to union staff?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Reiner, in the same operating expenses area, the professor technical, is that training? What is that line item? What is that line item, 5290, the one that went down?
Yeah, so that's our professional and technical services. So that is, so for example, our, we have two consulting inspectors, building inspectors on hand that we may utilize. Some of that is due to if we have a large increase in applications. It's been very difficult through our recruiting to get all the inspectors that we've needed. We've been doing this for a few years that had all of the qualifications. So that number, we realized this past year, we weren't utilizing them as much as our current inspectors that we do have, have been getting more training and more certifications, but they're still not up to having all the level that we need.
So are they kind of like a freelance group?
Yes, yeah. It's two individuals that are retired, that also work part-time or consult in some other municipalities. And they're basically on call if we need their services.
So that would explain why it goes up and down so much. It's one year you might have a lot and next year you just don't have it.
Yeah, so I mean, that's something for the past couple of years, but then historically, if you look back in, you know, 2021, the budget for that line item for operating and that professional services was much higher. That year, we may have been doing some type of a professional study, whether it was for tax increment financing or economic development strategy or something else along those lines.
Basically, your budget's pretty much almost flat.
Yeah.
Okay. Great, great, thank you.
Counsel Bordelone?
Thank you. Looking at the COG Climate Resilience Manager that's at zero, could you just explain that line item, line item as well as, I know we have something out to hire someone for resiliency. Is that going to come under this line in the future, once they're hired? Where will we see that?
So are you referencing the, there's a Climate and Resiliency Project Manager, which was in fiscal year 2022? And then in '23, it's listed for a Sustainability and Resiliency Manager because in '22, we kind of had a placeholder there for what the title was going to be. It's a Sustainability and Resiliency Manager. But then the council approved a job description that was for a Sustainability and Resiliency Manager. So that's why that was just shifted from one to the other? If that's what you're referring to? Are you looking at page 130?
I'm on 128 right now.
128. Oh, the COG Climate Resilience Manager. That may have been in fiscal year 2022. I'm not sure, were we looking at possibly funding or doing some joint funding for? I'll look to the manager.
I'll look back at that.
Okay.
They asked for, you know, if I recall, they asked for a one-time contribution to have some work done and the council approved. I'd have to look at exactly what that was.
But that's not something that we're asking for this year?
It's not this year, no.
Is it possibly going to come up on, in outside services or?
They didn't ask for it, no.
So it just wasn't asked for this year, that's what you're believing?
Right. I'll double check. Cindy, do you remember anything about that offhand?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the line item that she's questioning.
On page 128? I'll give you a second to get, are you on 128?
Yes.
If you look under, towards the bottom of the, 128?
Yep.
Okay, if you look under the finance?
I'm there.
If you look under the.
Oh, the Climate Resilience Manager revenue line item?
Yeah, I believe that was a one-time request from the COG, wasn't it?
No, what that was is when we were going to share that position with the City of Groton.
Oh, that's, yeah, because this is the finance plan. Correct, so this is our revenue.
The City of Groton.
Right, and then we ended up not doing that. Okay, that's what it was.
Okay.
And the council decided we needed a full-time one.
So is this something that needs to stay on here then?
No, no, it doesn't. It was never used.
Okay.
Well, it was used, but it's just under a different, it's basically just the salary for that person. So it moves into the regular salaries.
Okay. I think that was the one that I have here. I just want to check. I think that's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Baumgardner?
Thank you. To you, Mr. Reiner. What, I'll just run down the list here. So if you can just indicate yes or no, or perhaps our HR Director can answer this. Go down the list and, you know, indicate whether or not they are union. So Director of Planning and Development.
Non-union.
Assistant Director of Planning and Development.
Non-union.
Economic and Community Development Manager.
Non-union.
Manager Inspection Services.
Non-union.
Sustainability and Resiliency Manager.
Non-union.
Inspector, one, Construction.
Union.
Planner, two, Neighborhood.
Union.
Planner, two, Land.
Union.
Code Enforcement Planner, one.
Union.
ARPA Coordinator.
I believe that's a non-union position.
Economic Development Specialist.
Non-union.
Economic Development Tech.
Union.
You said that Economic Development Specialist is non-union?
Specialist is non-union, tech is union, building permit tech is union, inspector two is union, executive assistant OPDS is non-union, and then the two office assistant twos are union.
Okay, thank you very much. And you said there's, oh, office assistant two, but that's one position, correct?
No, that's, oh, sorry, yes, that is one position, yes.
Excellent. And then by and large, the percentage increases for every, is it one set amount? I didn't, wasn't able to kind of run the percentages, but did it equal to, you know, what was the percentage increase for salaries?
For non-union across the board, it's two and a half percent.
Two and a half percent?
Yes.
And that's for the whole department?
For every department, yes, for non-union.
And is that in line with what other departments are getting?
In terms of union, you mean?
In general.
We have three, if you, I maybe don't know, Arneisha's going to be visiting here soon. We have three that are actually coming due and we're just starting to negotiate. So that's not, you know, that would be changing. So there's nothing set for three of the unions. The other one, police, of course, are higher, I believe, Arneisha, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we have one union where that's at 2% for this upcoming year, plus they get the steps also.
Police is at two and they're still valid. And then four of them are going to be going up for negotiation.
Four of them, okay. So we have to wait for those to play out?
And you had mentioned that the City of Groton will not be shouldering any of the costs with respect to the Sustainability and Resiliency Manager?
That is correct. As we discussed, that was an early idea and we discussed it further, including with the resilience committee. They felt there was too, you know, more than enough work that it should be full-time here.
Okay.
It was their recommendation for it to be just with the town.
All right, and then.
Which I agree.
I imagine the Economic Development Fund will be a CIP?
The Economic Development Assistant Fund, that's a CIP.
Addition to it, yes.
All right. No further questions for now. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Bordelone?
Thank you. So the union and non-union raises were saying each person got a 2.5% raise?
As I said, we haven't settled out the union yet. We have to go through the process.
But you said that was only three sections that weren't settled out, but this was?
Four unions, everyone but the police.
Right, so the ones that were settled out, everyone's getting the non-union and the union are getting 2.5%?
The union has, for this year, it changes each year. For this year, it's 2% plus the steps on top of that.
And what are the non-union percents getting?
2.5. And they don't always match up every year. Some, you know, like I said, the steps add quite a bit on, which the non-union do not have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Parker has joined us at 6:41. So we are at nine councils. Any further discussion? And just so Counsel Parker's aware, we are, the motion on the floor is the number in the budget book, 1,618,196, we're on page 128, Planning and Development Services. Counsel Baumgardner?
Yes, so this evening, we talked earlier about the town clerk not getting a raise for about 11 years. And she's technically a department head, served longer than I think any other department head here in our community, actually has to work directly with everyday residents. And I have a hard time supporting increases for department heads when that isn't afforded to every other. And this is not indicative of how I feel personally about them. I know many of them are fine people. But I think it is patently unfair to be hamstrung not being able to provide raises to certain department heads, but grant them to others. So I know in the past, when I have moved a number to kind of isolate a specific problem, I've been told that it may not actually impact the budget in that intended way. So my question to Manager Bird is, if I were to move a certain number to reflect my desire for that no other department head will be getting a raise for this year, given that, what, what can I do and what can the council do to, to make that happen?
Well, first of all, so then if we did do non-union for the next four unions, we'll say zero also so no one will get raises?
I said department heads.
I know, but that's what the direction is going to be. If that's the case, we're not going to treat them differently. There's no difference, you know, they put more hours in typically, they have to do a lot of extra hours. I have the ability on my own to do up to a 4% raise outside of the budget, which would then go to the fourth quarter transfer out of contingency. We're going to do, we're going to pay the, the non-union. We'll see what we can do for Betsy, but we're not going to treat the non-union differently than the union. I won't be here for that. I will not stand for that. That is, that's patently unfair. They've gone years where the union people had raises and they didn't. We're not, they lagged behind. It would just be terrible. I won't, we're not going to do that.
Well, we have the power.
Yeah, you can do it, but I'll do the 4%.
With all due respect, Manager Bird, this body controls the purse. And guess who elects us? The people do. And we choose you.
I also have the authority to do up to a 4% outside of the budget.
Thank you, Counsel Franco?
Thank you. With the information that I just heard, it is not the department head's problem that this council did not give the town clerk a raise. It is the responsibility of this town council to give the clerk a raise. So you do not punish other people because this town council failed to do what they should do when there were plenty of emails sent out, plenty, that people did not respond to. So if there are issues that the town clerk did not get an increase, it is on this town council and do not put that on other people. So welcome, Mr. Reiner. And my question for you is, it seems as though there is a lot of development going on in our community and people coming in with applications. And I was curious as to your department, the amount of work your department is doing? Is as it increased, how are things going in your department?
Work has increased. And one item that may or may not really be on the council's radar that has actually substantially increased our workload, but we don't have a short-term. Is we are in the process of implementing our online permitting software. And it is taking a substantial amount of staff time through our planning inspection services and clerical staff. It, you know, our consultant has estimated that it should take, for most of us, about 40% of our time for the next year, working on implementing this permitting software. And we didn't factor that into our current workload. So it's, it's putting a strain on things, but that in itself has, has made things a little bit difficult. Also, we've had some turnover in the department, so we're bringing some new people up to speed. We had a retirement and one person shifted over one role to the other. So that always adds an added burden as somebody learns a new role and then filling that other position.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Gassiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bird, just to clarify, statutorily, we cannot raise the town clerk's salary at this time, correct?
That's my belief. I will research it in the council. If it's not the case, if you can do it, then we just do it any point.
Great, thank you. Mr. Reiner, coming from the law enforcement world, I realize that often towns are competing with other towns for employees. Can you just speak to that a little bit?
Sure. I'm actually going through that trouble right now. I had another member of my department actually give his notice today, someone who's been working with us for four years, an outstanding planner. And his position right now is a 40-hour union position in the place where he's going. Salary-wise, it'll be basically lateral, except for the fact that instead of working 40 hours, he'll be working 35 hours. He will be getting comp time at 1.5 hours for every hour of night meeting that he works. It's also only a mile from his home. So those are the things that we're dealing with. I am often very active and somewhat shameless in how I recruit. I will call all colleagues that I know that I think might be looking, that might not be entirely feeling challenged in the municipality that they're working for, that I think they might be underpaid where they are. Is there something we can do? And unfortunately, all the ones that I've been calling lately are telling me how they're making more money in the places they work. They're working 35 hours a week and they're getting remote time, flexibility with night meetings and things that we don't currently offer. In addition to that, a number of years ago, the planning program, the master's degree at URI had shut down over 10 years ago now, and we're really feeling the pinch for that when we have been recruiting for other positions, whether it's us or even, there was someone that we recently interviewed, that was from Texas, and the council of governments was looking for a position. And we let them know that, hey, there was a really good woman looking for a job. She originally from Norwich, went to school down there. They're going to be hiring her. So there's a lot of word of mouth going around. If you look at the job posting boards in Rhode Island, Mass, and Connecticut through the planners' network, there's a lot of jobs that are open for a long period of time. The same goes for economic development. And building officials is extremely difficult, not only in Connecticut, in Rhode Island, in Massachusetts. And I know it's constantly one place stealing from another. I often have conversations with my building inspectors that please keep me in a loop for when they're getting recruited because they often are. But I know that they're happy with the work and the professional development opportunities that we're giving them here. But that's something that's always on my mind. And I had a conversation with the town manager about it today, with our HR Director in the last week. And I actually need to touch base with her tomorrow on that very issue because it's, it's difficult. It's something that I've always prided myself in, how effective we've been as a team to bring on great people into the department. And just the workforce is getting smaller and is getting more and more competitive.
Thank you. I was a lateral transfer myself, so I completely get it. And do you think that raises will help with morale and retention?
I think that they certainly will, as well as looking at other benefits that we can do for the town, especially for our very highly educated, very educated, licensed, certified types of staff people. And it's not just in my department. I know, you know, you look at finance, public works, any of the departments that have people that have higher education, they're being sought out everywhere. There's a lot of people doing what I do now and reaching out and recruiting and trying to, you know, take somebody from here and take somebody from there. So, you know, it's, the better we can do on that, you know, morale is always a very important thing. It's not always just about the money. It's about training opportunities, working on exciting projects. All of those things weigh into it. You know, a lot of places now, both public and private are looking at remote, you know, and I know sometimes it gets inconvenient with meetings, but if we have good connections, that little bit of a benefit makes a big difference for people's quality of life.
And I wanted to add on to that.
Sure.
Just to add on, generally speaking, one, another issue is we, the pay plan was adopted for non-union in 2017. At that time, the data was about two years old. The union, the union contracts get, you know, looked at pretty often, especially if you remember, we've had some one-year agreements over time. Whereas the non-union has stayed stagnant, including especially the key is that starting salary. So Arneisha's currently working on an updated one so that we can get those salaries all moved up.
And just one little piece, you know, when we think about, you know, And just one little piece, you know, when we think about, you know, these employees that I'm either talking to and recruiting that are based off of a 35-hour a week versus 40, you know, one may think, oh, that's not that big of a difference. Well, it's actually a 12 and a half percent difference of time and how that equates to salary. And that's something that those five extra hours do add up with people, so.
Great. Thank you for that explanation, and I appreciate you doing what you can to try and pull some people in. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we've done two rounds of speaking. I need consent from the council for a third round.
Is everyone on their round?
I have not.
All right, I got three yeses. Four?
Oh, you're asking to do a third round?
Council Westerville, Council McBride.
Can you, I do not have any questions if that's what you're asking, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
I'm asking for consent for a third round of questions from the council.
I'm okay with the third round of questions.
So we have, we have, thank you. Council Baumgartner?
Thank you. So I would just note, this is budget season. Time limits during budget season. We should highly consider eliminating that for the rest of budget season. We have a fiduciary responsibility to vet a multimillion-dollar budget. A budget that is going to raise spending 8.8 million, 8.8% if we do nothing. So I've heard, you know, pretty
Point of order?
What's your point of order?
We should be discussing.
I'm talking about the budget.
The actual item I
What is your point of order?
Point of order is we're supposed to be talking about the line item currently, not the overall budget. We should be talking about what was presented right now.
Absolutely. And I would note that this line item specifically, the planning and development line, will contribute to that 8.8% increase as there's a 1.8% increase in the budget. I'm sorry, 1.4 increase. Personnel services are up $34,000 and operating expenses are down $12,000. So in order to close that delta, preferably, I would like to see a 0% increase. And I had asked earlier about what the impact would be to make some changes with respect to department head increases. And the manager also mentioned non-union increases. So we could get to a 0% number, and I would like to move a number. But I cannot do so unless I have the information available, what the impact would be to this budget, specifically the line items. Because if we move a number, it is really up to you to allocate how those dollars are spent. So I'd like some clarity on a few of those questions. Thank you.
It's not something I can just speak off the top of my head. We'd have to really review it. I mean.
Say again?
I can't speak off the top of my head. We'd have to, I'd have to meet with the department head, HR, finance, and really discuss it.
Discuss what?
Where we might make any adjustments, if we were to make adjustments.
But, so my question is, what role does the council play in making those adjustments? As a body that votes on the budget that the taxpayers have to pay for?
The bottom line.
The bottom, I'm sorry, I have no idea what you're saying.
The bottom line number.
Right. The council decides on the bottom line, one, like, for instance, 1,618,196, it's the town manager's job to do the allocation. We don't have any say in the allocation.
So we set the, we set the number and it is ultimately up to the town manager to decide how those dollars are spent?
Correct.
And our input has absolutely no bearing on your ultimate decision on how those dollars are expended?
Of course we take it into consideration.
We, or?
As we discussed, yeah, internally.
So that would be the finance director yourself, department heads, et cetera. Excellent. All right, well, don't seem to have a lot of latitude this budget sample, so. Thank you, Mr. Reiner, for your indulgence, and I have no further questions. Thank you.
Council Bordelone?
Thank you. Just looking at the number here, you know, in the past, we just would move that number either way. And then, like you said, it would have to be. So I guess my question to the town manager is, looking at the number from last year, what would happen if that number was what was given, what you then would go back and work your numbers to decide where you're gonna take the downfall, basically?
Right, right. And I should add on, the one thing you can do is the council, if you changed a position, if you knocked out a position, that would change, you know, that would be a permanent change, which of course would have a good chance of hamstringing the department. But that is something the council can do.
Right. I mean, also, I think as well, you know, looking at this and deliberating on it, you know, we have to, I mean, everyone wants a raise, right? But, you know, we are coming off of a pandemic and a 2, to 2.5% raise is one thing. So if that's the area you want to move the money in, that's the choice of the town manager. But we are looking at the bottom line number. A bottom line number then, you know, can decrease a department in its, you know, in the event. And then they can still get their raises, but there might be an area where there's other things that you may want to consider cutting. Looking at this, if this number was moved down, where would you reallocate funds, or a possibility? And we've said this in many other budget meetings, so this is not off-topic.
Hey, I can, I'm not gonna say where exactly I would cut.
Well, if you're gonna give the raises, so we're down to only a few other lines, correct?
If I could weigh in, so one of the bigger increases that we had within our department budget was we allocated $6,000 to do background checks. Not for our department, but that was something, that was a big line item that we put in there. Something we thought was important and we're, it's a little bit of a guess on a number there. But we felt like that was something that was necessary, but it was a big hit.
When I'm looking at $6,000 as something that we should be doing for the municipality, I don't see that as like a benefit in the sense that it's, I felt it's something that should have been worked in many years ago. Quite frankly, when I'm looking at salaries of $132,000 and greater, 6,000 is a drop in the bucket. So when we're looking at 2% raises on $120,000 salaries or more, 6,000 is nothing in the big picture to protect the town from legality. So I don't, I really see the comparison that, even though I do appreciate that. I'm thankful that it's there and it should have been there a long time ago. My concern is the council had to move forward with that recommendation, not the paid staff that we're talking about salaries here and raises that was driven by the council. So sometimes I find that, you know, it's unclear as where we're going looking at these line items and where the money is being pooled or pushed to allocate for the town and advocate for the town. There's areas in which should just, you know, these professionals that we seek should be, it should be part of the budget. That should have been already encompassed in economic growth and development. So I don't know if that's a justifiable thing for me. I'll speak for myself personally. Go ahead.
Department budget this year went up by about $22,000. We reduced our operating expenses substantially. And one item that we had increased, a bigger item that we had increased was that $6,000. I don't call it out for the particular item that it is, but that was something that was an increase. There weren't a lot of things that we really went up in, other than contractual obligations of what is in our salary. So again, our operating expenses went down significantly. I'll leave it at that.
Mayor, just to add on. Couple of things. When I first arrived, the biggest complaint from staff was that non-union people were treated poorly compared to union. That was, that was the number one by far. Everybody came to me about that. I can tell you, if we start touching non-union and don't touch union, recruiting is over. It's done. And I do have some money built in here for raises for the, you know, we always put some in and then see where the union comes out at, and then if we need everybody gets zero, you know, we start, you know, for the raises, union and non-union.
So my comments weren't necessarily reflective of decreasing anybody's raises. Mine's looking at the bottom line number, and I leave that to you, the town manager, to figure out where you want to move the money. I'm not saying that no one, I didn't say, I personally did not say, union or non-union should get more or not. I'm looking at the bottom line number and a way in which you would have to rework your number, just like we do with the Board of Ed. They come forward with a number and we ask them to move that, you know, many different budget lines. That's what you're hired to do as a town manager and make a decision. There are certain jobs that aren't getting raises at all post-pandemic. So, and every job right now has competitive things. In the medical field, we are having trouble getting qualified techs, nurses, doctors, and it is very competitive. So I can concur with, you know, one of the, you know, department heads up here.
Council's time has expired.
Thank you. And I can agree with that, so, but that's gonna be all the time, everywhere. People are competing. I've seen some town staff come from the clerk's office, from New London, back and forth. So that's, that's always been there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Cassiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Burt, just to clarify, the council has always only have, ever had control over the bottom line number, and this hasn't magically changed this year, correct?
Correct. That is correct, other than the number of positions, of course.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Council Franco?
Thank you. There is massive inflation in our country right now. There is, people are leaving their jobs to better themselves. I just read that Target is looking to pay $24 an hour to work at Target. Target, to be a cashier, probably. So when you're looking at people in their jobs and you say, don't give them an increase and they should go without, they're gonna go somewhere else. That's the way I look at it. Times have changed in the way people work in at government, the way I see it, in my own personal opinion. It used to be the government had the best benefits. The pay not, may not have been so great, but the benefits were outstanding. And these things have all changed. And now you have outside competition and other communities. And this is the price to do business. And I'll tell you, our, the whole culture has changed. And the things that you're having to deal with, and even the things that we as a council have to deal with, have changed the culture. So I think you do, you know, a fantastic job. I think you deal with a lot of things in our community that aren't always pleasant. And I think you do it in a very professional manner, as well as your whole department. And I thank you. And I honestly think that a 1.4% increase, while inflation is well over 7%, I thank you for keeping it so tight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other discussion, I'll call for a vote, and we are voting on $1,618,196. Council Bordelone, how do you vote?
No. That's a no.
Thank you. Council Baumgartner, how do you vote? Council Cassiri?
Yes.
Council Franco?
Yes.
Council Jones?
Yes.
Council McBride?
Yes.
Council Parker?
Yes.
Council Westerville?
Aye.
And Melendez is yes. That carries seven in favor to opposed Bordelone Baumgartner.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just a piece of housekeeping. If anybody, I have the next week's council packets, just because Lisa's out of town. So if you didn't grab it, please grab it free though. And of course, the two people at home, I will, will mail out.
Thank you. We are now on to Parks and Recreation, 1064. Can be found on page 149 of your budget books. I make a motion for $1,946,968.
Second, Bordelone.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Bordelone. And we have Director Berry to speak to us on his budget.
Good evening. Mark Berry, Director of Parks and Recreation. To my immediate right is Jerry Locken, Manager of Recreation Services. And to his right is Mary Jo Riley, who is the Director of Thrive 55. And we have zooming tonight Eric Morrison, who is the Parks Manager and Superintendent for Senecostia Golf Course. Todd Goodhue, who is the golf pro. And Ben Morse, who's one of our programmers, is interested in the whole budget process. So he's zooming in tonight also. So before we start talking about the budget, I just wanted to hit on a couple of department successes over the last, or certainly over the last couple of years. COVID has had a significant impact on how the department operates, a significant negative impact. But we have been able to achieve some successes. In the last couple of years, we've doubled the number of plots at the Knoway Community Garden. And I expect that to continue, given the price of food. We did secure a grant for $344,000 to improve community connectivity. It will be a bike path that's gonna run from the Route One, the existing Route One bike path through Sutton Park and connect out to Midway Oval. Through the work of hundreds of volunteer hours, Millwood Creek Disc Golf Course is going to be, well, it's open now, but we're gonna be finalizing that project in the next couple of months. And that's already received a great deal of interest throughout even this, this winter. We've partnered with Bike Grotten to run, or to build a pump track. They're currently fundraising money. They're proposing to build that in a park just down the road and then turn that over to the town. At Thrive 55, they continue to serve seniors, providing essential transportation. And the Thrive staff also fundraised $35,000 to hand out 10,000 meals to, to those that were food insecure. So a couple more things, just looking ahead. Staff at Thrive 55 are gonna be working with the police department to roll out a Project Lifesaver. And that's designed to reduce recovery time for patients with dementia that tend to wander, which is one of the common characteristics of folks that are suffering from dementia. I'm pleased to say that two years ago, we started working on this project just before COVID hit. And that is an after-school meals program. We're gonna be working with the Board of Ed and serving the meals, or providing the meals out of the community center. We just had the fire marshal give us the okay within the last couple of days. And we're working on hiring somebody to, actually, no. One of the volunteer coordinators here at the senior center is lining up volunteers to help us with that program. And we're also gonna be introducing an after-school drop-in program at the community center. So the budget, our proposed budget is up 9.7%. And I know that's a considerable amount of money. The reason for that is, well, there's a number of reasons. We are proposing to move three positions that were previously in the 3240 Fund, which is our special revenue fund. I mentioned earlier that COVID has had a significant impact on our department. The 32, the, that fund, the 3240 Fund, program registration money went into that fund and paid for the positions that we're proposing to move into 1064. Over the last couple of years, we've seen our special revenue fund become completely depleted. That's a fund that we had managed for the last 15 years or so. And that money is, that fund is completely wiped out. So we're, we've proposed to move two part-time positions in the Food Concession Cost Center. The Food Concession Cost Center is, is the cost center that provides the food that we serve here, the affordable, healthy meals that we serve to serve here, the affordable, healthy meals that we serve to the seniors here. The other position that we proposed to move was a position in senior programs. And at the time, when we put this budget together, and the number that has been put out on the floor, that senior program position was a 30-hour non-union position. I think the town manager sent out to the council today an email explaining that after the budget was submitted, the town and the union looked at that 30-hour position, looked at what that person was doing, and made a determination that that really should be a union position 35 hours. So, the number that's been put out on the floor does not reflect the change that the, that the HR department and the town feel that needs to be made. So, I'm not exactly sure how we're going to handle that.
Right. You would have to, and you, everybody has a spreadsheet for that increase, and we do have the HR Director online if there's any particular questions, but it's, it's a change that does need to be made.
And the other change, and I apologize that, you know, we presented one thing, and then it's, it has changed. The other change that we're presenting is, I had a few months back, sat down with the town manager, we did not have an HR director at the time, with a finance director, and kind of laid out a five-year plan to address what I identified with staff shortages. One of those, and it was set up for FYE '24, was a full-time, adding a full-time person to the Parks Division. The reason being is, over the last, well, I can tell you since 2000, in 2009, we had 7.75 Parks employees. We currently have 5.75. So, we've lost employees, but we've gained additional parks and trails. We've picked up, as of April 1st, we'll have picked up about 86 different, 86 additional acres of parkland that we're responsible for. And there's also eight more miles of trails that the staff is responsible for. So, in this original budget, we had asked for a .5 increase in the Parks budget. The town manager has sent out information where we'd actually, if the number gets moved, would be asking for 1.5 additional staff. So, that's only one of the, one of the reasons that the, the budget has gone up.
I just want to mention, just Monday night, the Board of Ed had approved moving two schools to the town, Espy-Beltler and Claude Chester. Those are two more now that Parks and Rec will be taking over.
Yes, as of April 1st. Additional reasons for the proposed increase is drop in programming. I mentioned that we're about to hire a drop-in programmer. We, the department has made a commitment to be more equity-aware, and we are, we feel, we recognize the fact that there are people in town that can't afford our programs. For a long time, we've been pay-to-play driven, and that has left a segment of the community out, and we've refocused to try to be more inclusive. And one of the ways that we are looking to do that is to provide drop-in after-school programming. So, right now, in the current budget, we have about four hours a week. We're proposing to increase that to 10 hours a week. Additional reasons for the increase, collective bargaining agreements, and also, we hire a number of seasonal employees, and the Connecticut minimum wage keeps going up, so that, that impacts, that impacts our bottom line also. So, that's on the personnel side. On the operating side, it's already been discussed this evening, the increased cost of building materials and agricultural supplies, that's, you know, parks, they purchase seed and soil, and all of those things are going up. Repairs and maintenance supplies, in the last two years, we've spent about $7,000 a year just fixing playgrounds, and it's amazing how expensive playground pieces are. We just recently replaced a web over at Pocahontas Plains Park, and it was $4,200. And we can't shop around for these because they are exclusive to that playground manufacturer, so they have us over a barrel. The choice we have is to, to take those things down and just not have a complete park. That's a little difficult to do when you have a slide. You can't really take out one section that's cracked and not replace it, because now it goes from a slide to a drop, free form. We are, in our interest of trying to work more efficiently, we do have proposed in here the lease of an autonomous field lining machine. So, we've had a demonstration of this. This would free up about 240 hours of labor. We track what we spend time doing. We spend about 250 hours a year just lining fields. This autonomous paint liner, we would, you'd set a point in the ground, you set up a tripod, and it's got a, like a survey, I forget what that's called. Anyways, it's got something on the, on the top of the, on the tripod that sends a signal to this paint liner, and you set the paint liner down, and you've, after you've programmed it in, the paint liner will paint the entire field. And so, right now, we have a guy sitting on a machine every week, and he has to drive around and do that with this machine. The guy goes up, he sets the machine up, he can go off and do other work while this paints multiple fields, and we could, and because of the shortage of fields we have in town, it does fields inside fields, which is what we're doing now. We've got fields that go lengthwise, and then two fields sideways. And also, another reason for the increase is the loss of a sponsorship for the Sale Fest. That, for the last four or five years, not the last two, because the Sale Fest hasn't taken place, but prior to that, we had one sponsor that was covering a significant amount of the expenses associated with Sale Fest. The town rents the fort space, we rent 30 or so portlets, and we bring staff in, and they're there for two days to just manage the trash, and then the following day to pick up. So, there's a considerable expense to, to that, and we've lost that sponsor, so we've put that money back in to our budget. Wow, my throat's dry. So, that is kind of an explanation of where we've got in, in our budget, and I'm sure there's lots of questions.
Thank you. So, I'm going to begin by making a motion for $2,029,566.
I'll second that motion.
Point of information?
What's your point of information?
I thought you could only have one motion on the floor per person.
During, during budget time, you can have up to three numbers on the floor, the original motion and two amendments.
Understood.
It doesn't matter who it is that actually is the person who moves or seconds, it's just the fact that you have those three numbers, and we can't go over that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And to speak to my motion briefly, that's just to change the non-union position to the union position, and also add the maintainer as described by Director Berry. Counselor Franco?
I just had a clarifying, sorry. I have just a clarifying question, but I'll wait for Counselor Franco.
So, thank you very much. I think you guys have been very busy, especially during COVID, people using outdoor spaces. I have heard from the community, questions. I have brought, I have actually gone on some little tour last weekend of some of the parks in our town. I brought some of my concerns to Mr. Burt, which was talked to you, and hence, like, the email that you had sent with the, the spreadsheet, showing actually how much work you actually do in our community, and it's enormous, and I'm, I apologize that I didn't print that out and bring it with me tonight. You also take care of, which maybe people in our community don't know, that you take care of cemeteries as well, the pocket parks in our neighborhoods, on top of the big parks and sports fields, and, but we have had some people with concerns of like, of the maintenance of these parks, and wanting maybe better maintenance. And what you have presented to us in that document shows that we really are not up to par with where we should be with our staffing, and that we're, we need more, basically. I had talked to some people in the community, and they said, you, you used to have a lot more staff when you had less things to take care of, and now you have more things to take care of and less staff. So, can you tell me, like, maybe at the height of your staffing on maintenance, like park maintenance and things of that nature, where you were at your height? Because I believe there was full-time, and then there was also seasonal, is that correct?
Yeah, I, I did reach out to HR to see if they kept, I, I'm not aware that our department has ever kept, like, a spreadsheet of the number of employees and how it changes from year to year. I did reach out to HR, and they were, they were looking into that. All I can, I can go back to 2009, when we did our Recreation Master Plan, and we had 7.75 full employee, full-time employees, and we had seven part-time employees. Now, we have, as I said earlier, we have 5.75 full-time employees, and in a good summer, we may get four seasonal employees.
So, that looks like you're basically down approximately five or six people, in consideration with them all together.
Right. If you, right, if you added up the seasonal staff and, right, we have less, or half the seasonal staff and, and less full-time staff.
Okay. So, on this document, it says, basically, if I'm reading it correctly, it's about almost $50,000 for a maintainer for a full-time position.
Yes.
That we were given today. And would seasonal positions, would that, would that, would your utilization of seasonal positions go further with you? And because you don't probably have to pay as much in the benefit, and you would also have them just seasonally, maybe people home from college or whatever, working all summer with you.
Yeah.
Would more people in the summer be better than one full-time person type of thing? I'm...
We're, we're lucky if we get four.
It's just hard to find them.
Our, the, what we're paying, our seasonal help, is around $15 or $16 an hour. In the, in the outside market, they're getting 20 to 22 to work for a landscaper, and in a lot of cases, they're getting paid under the table.
Right.
So, we can't compete with that. The other challenge with seasonal employees is, they come in May, and they leave by mid-August. But we've got work that starts, guys are going to be lining fields starting next week. The golf course has already started mowing, and we've also got work that continues way past August. The grass doesn't stop growing in August, it grows, you know, into October or so. So, seasonal help, if we could get it, if we could compete with, you know, the commercial outside of the municipal, would help, but I don't think that's, I honestly don't think that's the solution.
All right. Well, that was very enlightening, and I appreciate all your information, and thank you so much. And I will be supporting the extra position because I think it is sorely needed, and actually, I wish we could put more positions in, because I think during COVID, there was much conversation about wanting more events in our community, and I wish we could also fund that as well, just so that you could create and put on more events in our community, because I think there's a dire need for that with such a thing as the town green, but maybe we could still do more of those type of things in smaller events. But I appreciate that, and thank you very much.
Counselor Bordelon?
I just had a quick clarifying question. So, what will these numbers change to the percent that we're looking at as an increase? So, the 9.7, you know, since you guys brought all this paperwork, which someone came, unfortunately, I was at work when those emails had come through, and I got the paper when I arrived here, what are we looking at for number increases? That's my first question. Under personnel, under...
Sure.
Just want to make sure I'm calculating my numbers right. What are you guys predicting, since our book is now considered outdated? My other question, while you guys are working on that, is the Sale Fest. Is there any collaboration with the city to see if there's any mutual funding that can be done for that?
Yeah, I'm not sure what mutual cooperation with the city.
Yeah, the Sale Fest fireworks at Fort Griswold happen, you know, Fort Griswold is in the city. The town and the city do work together, the police departments, the Park and Rec departments, we, we work together to do that. The town of Groton, though, in the past, has rented Fort Griswold. We've, we've kind of taken control of Fort Griswold, so we rent it from the state. The state provides a certain level of staffing, we provide our own staffing, as Mark mentioned, the trash pickup, the porta-litrines, the entertainment, and all those things. And in past years, we have had a sponsor that helps pay for that, but again, that sponsorship is, is not in place right now, and it's, it's being put back into the general fund. But the city does have expenses related to what's going on there, but the activities at Fort Griswold for our part of Sale Fest are in the town's budget.
My other question, then, is have we ever reached out to try to, now that that's, you know, it just would make sense to me, as a person who lives in the city, who pays dual taxes, I would fully support, you know, the city's budget to then collaborate. So, you know, there's one thing to say it went away, but I don't believe the town side should take on the full burden, because all of the people of the city and the town partake in that. So, it's, I'm excited to hear that the police collaborate in certain things, but maybe they're willing to take on all of the trash this time, or help split the expense. Have we reached out and tried to ask? Because, like, again, as a person, I don't feel it should be solely the town's responsibility of tax dollars under our own budget to fully fund the Sale Fest. I do believe that there should be a cost split, and, you know, as a portion, a per person who supports the city budget and pays into it, I, I think that that's something we should consider doing.
I would suggest that the city of Groton has expenses that the town doesn't have for Sale Fest, since it happens on city streets. Their public works department, their police department are more heavily impacted than, than the town is. So, those, those expenses fall entirely on the city. Their, their police, I would suspect their police force has a higher percentage of their officers on duty than the town does, the, you know, and like I said, the roads and streets are absolutely the, the responsibility of, of the city. And beyond that, the city also takes care of everything that's not in Fort Griswold. So, you know, Thane Street and all of those things are, are 100% in the city's kind of realm, so I don't want to, you know, suggest that the city is not paying their fair share in the event.
That's not what I'm stating. I think more what I'm asking is for maybe some collaboration. If, if we're going to lose a sponsor, it might be time, I don't know if this is something the town manager, or, or, you know, Mark Berry, but I would think that maybe we should meet with them, collaborate, see what their numbers are. I'd like that presented back to the council, that would be an ask then as well. Find out what the city's paying normally, ballpark, what we've paid in the past, and see if we can work together now that we're losing that other funding, and split it down the middle, because it's just a benefit to the city as well as it's the town, and all the surrounding towns, Mystic, Stonington. So, there might be a way that we can kind of move that number. It's not, it might be a large savings, but it's something we should think about as we're losing sponsorships, and it might encourage some joint efforts to look for future sponsorships as a team, since it's on, you know, state land and a collaboration benefit for the whole of Groton. So, that, that's something I would like to see, definitely looking at next year's budget.
Lori?
Excuse me, madam. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Just as a point, who was it that seconded that second amendment, that first amendment?
The fir, the first amendment was Counselor Baumgartner.
Baumgartner, thank you very much.
And I'm getting my math's 14.6% increase year over year. And I'm getting my math's 14.6% increase year over year.
It's 14.3.
Okay.
I had 14.4, but.
Cindy double-checked.
It's 14.3, okay. And, and what's the, what's the numbers for personnel and how is that breaking down?
I didn't, I broke it down by the main number. We were going up 9.7% and 171,000, this would bring it to the 14.3 and 253,991, adding 81,635.
Okay. My other question is, how much does it cost for the Sale Fest now losing the sponsorship?
I believe that number went up by about $5,000.
That's not a ton of money.
What's that?
That's not, I mean, it's not a huge, I mean, it's great, but it's, I'm just looking at the 14.453, you know, so even if the city kicked in some, that's not going to move that number all that much when you're looking at 5,000. But it would be great to just look for any, are you guys actively seeking any other sponsors?
Yes.
And the position that we're adding, is that the position that we consolidated in at the last budget? There was a position where that was a part-time and a part-time, or if I remember correctly, and we kind of eliminated it and merged somebody into?
You are correct. We have a, a full-time position that they work one week at the golf course, one week at parks. In the, in the first number that was moved, in the budget that was presented to you, that included adding, creating a full-time, one more full-time position. So it would have been one position in the golf course and one position in parks. So that person that was splitting their time would have made a decision to either go into parks or go to the golf course and then we would have added one more position. That was in the original number that was moved. During my presentation, I suggested that we add one more additional person to the parks division. I know it's confusing when you've got a full-time person and you're splitting them, but essentially we're asking to add another full-time person and split them. That was in the original budget that was presented to the council. And then my discussion tonight was to add one more full-time person.
My last clarifying question, then I'm going to relook at everything, is this new position someone that's going to move up into this position or are we adding a completely new position, someone's coming in? So is it a part-time person that's going to move into this full-time? Just want to make sure my numbers look right here.
Yeah.
Because I'm a little confused, sorry, because it's, this was all given to me when I showed up, so.
Yeah.
We'd have to go through any HR processes for decide, you know, it's not something we can say without going through the process.
Right, I'm just trying to understand, so there's not a person that's currently moving up into the full-time position necessarily? You guys are just creating a position and then going to have people apply internally, externally, possibly?
Yes.
It's not someone that you guys are ready to move off, Lori?
Right.
Thank you for clarifying, thank you.
It'll begin internally, yes.
Counsel Cessary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Director Berry. Can you just go over some of the repairs and maintenance costs that you talk about in the summary?
So repairs, repair and maintenance costs, well, I can pull up the detail sheet.
Says funding includes materials and supplies costs associated with necessary repairs and maintenance of aging recreational amenities.
Right, right. Yeah, that's something that, we, we increased that because we're seeing an increase, our playgrounds are getting older and we're seeing that we're spending more money replacing broken parts, if we can get parts to replace it. So we, we increased it because we're just seeing those expenses.
Okay, thank you. And if you could just go over some of, is there any other equipment and investments and technology besides the fancy paint machine you spoke of?
No, not, not really. I mean, that's, well, the only other thing that we're asking for is, is an equipment lift. So right now, the equipment, we either have to prop it up and climb under, we've asked for an equipment lift, which would lift it up so that somebody could work under a piece of equipment comfortably, safely, rather than having to crawl underneath and try to work, change oil and do things like that. We've got a lot of mowers and things like that that are, it's a challenge to easily get access to them and work on them.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for not knowing the actual name. To me, it's fancy paint machine. So is there anything in your budget that could potentially go on hold that we could maybe use ARPA money for?
Most of the, we've submitted a number of projects for ARPA. Those are really more capital versus operating. I'm not, I don't know if there's limitations to ARPA as far as.
You know, some of your materials could be, but, you know, but then you have to build it back in after the one time, you know, if this is the level, it's going to be ongoing, then you want to build it in.
And, you know, quite honestly, we have not invested a lot in parks. We waited 20 years to get a bathroom at our community park. So the money that we've, the projects that we've submitted for consideration for ARPA money are really to address the fact that we've disinvested in our parks over the last 20 years. And you're clearly seeing it with playgrounds that are falling apart, you know, I think you said you drove through Sutton Park and the parking lot's a mess and, you know, the, the gazebo is falling apart and it's just, so that's what we've kind of focused the ARPA money on.
Okay.
And just kind of while you're touching on that, what I see the parks are up being is almost like where you stick your finger in the dam, you know, another leak pops up. We get complaints, we move some resources over here, we have to forget other things, it's just non-stop complaints that we just allow, the squeaky wheel gets to the, you know, the grease type of thing.
Okay, so it's your opinion that there are other things that ARPA money could be used for?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, if it's one-time purchase, you know, that's great, you know, like, like CIPs, but for building into the budget, it's not so good.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Berry and, and Mr. Larkin. I just wanted to sort of highlight, you had sent out some information from the National Recreation and Park Association Agency Performance Review and there's a paragraph in here, I just wanted to read that. As someone who spends a huge amount of time mowing grass by miles in this town for GOSA, I'm very, very familiar with how much time it takes to, to keep our trails and, and open space clean. I just, I want to commend you for what you've done and the huge resource that we have here in the town for this, especially during COVID. It was the outpouring on all four trail systems and the parks was huge. So I think they, they took a beating during the last two years and maybe we're seeing some of the result of that. But there was just a couple sentences here, says the median number of acres of parkland per 1,000 residents for communities of a population range 20 to, to 400, 50,000 is 9.8 and Groton is at 27. The number, the median number of miles for trails is 8.5, Groton is 28. The median number of staff per thousand residents in a community range from 20,000 to 50,000 is 9.8 and Groton is at four. To summarize, the community enjoys the benefits of having access to parks and trails that exceed typical communities across the country, delivered by a staff that is at the lowest quartile compared to other communities in our similar size. So I think, I just, I think that's worth noting and just commending the amazing job that you guys do and I'll be supporting this budget and it's a tremendous resource to our community and to, to the dedication that all of your employees have. I think it's just, it's just great and I just want to thank you for that, so.
Thank you. I just have a quick question, is lighting for, and just the skate park in general, also lighting?
It's in a CIP.
It's in a CIP.
It's included already, yeah.
All right, thank you. Counsel Board along.
Thank you. When talking about the, the square footage and as, you know, of, of the land, when I saw some of that, but you don't maintain all of our open space though, is that correct?
That's correct.
So that number is reflective of all of the open space or just the open space that you guys mow?
Yes, that reflects.
The 20, 26% is what you guys mow, is, or is that also including the stuff volunteers do?
No, why, we did not include GOSA, open space or Avaloni or anything like that. And we didn't include the entire amount of open space. I focused on the areas that we're actively managing on a regular basis.
What about Quantic Plains Park, so the lighting for the skate park is in there, is there anything that you guys are considering for the, I know a while back, I heard the concerns during COVID at the Quantic Plains Park for the walking track to be resurfaced, widened, because one of the things that we found with COVID is when the gym closes, there wasn't anywhere to go safe, even when it starts to become dusk, especially in the winter months, it's cold, there's nowhere to go. If you don't live in a neighborhood that's walkable, because we have, you know, streets that don't have sidewalks or maybe aren't, don't feel safe, is any of that going to be?
The lights are in the CIP. Did you look at widening? I don't remember if widening's in there.
Yes, we are planning on doing widening, we were going to do that internally, widen the, the track. I'm not sure that we're going to get to it once the grass starts growing. But yes, we are intending on widening the track and there is money in the CIP for, for lighting.
And that's like a solar lighting for, for the walkway?
Yes.
Okay, and that will be in the CIP, so that's not reflected in the 14.3?
That's correct.
No, I mean, I mean, looking at all of this, I mean, it's hard, we're, I mean, we were, it's tough to be up here because there's a lot of services that are needed. I mean, I do think that we have some amazing parks, but I do think like they do not look as, I don't want to use the word pretty, but that might be the, what it's coming to mind, they don't look as vibrant, even our school grounds. You don't, you don't pull up and see tulips and flowers, blooming bushes anywhere, nothing in front of the town hall. And Groton is an amazing place to live in, it should have, when I grew up here, you used to see that. You'd pull into the front of the school, it was beautiful, you know, grounds. But I do think there's a disconnect and it's hard for me to sit up here where I think our, some towns have moved parks and recreation as separate, recreation and parks and there's park people and recreation people and they split them apart, so. But also, I feel in our town, there's some other connect with the Board of Ed.
Sure, so we manage some of the fields for the schools, like the middle school field, we're now maintaining the, the infield and the outfield for the baseball field. We're also doing some work on the high school fields. So the Board of Ed pays to the town money to do that work.
So basically, it's a wash, is what you're saying? So that, that $65,000 they paid in and then it goes back out? So it's just a revolving door, so to speak?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
So, you know, you, you talk about a disconnect, yes, over the years, as our budget's been trimmed, we've lowered our standards. And we used to plant flowers when we had staff to do it, we don't do that anymore.
Shout out to the beautification committee, though, they did do something to town.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it is a concern because I think it's, you know, we could, it's, it's great to have the beautification, it's great to have committees, but usually, just like the sports fields committee, when they rise up, it's a bunch of volunteers that were concerned. That should be a cry for the town to do something because the, the tapestry of the town, you know, with the, the forks in the roads, you don't see big pots, plant, it just looks drab. And, and it's no insult, it's an insult to the budget, it's an insult to where everything's cutting, it seems like, seeing other things are going up, but the, you, we keep saying we want to attract people, but we're doing nothing to, to maintain the quality of life and even out in front of here, this is a brand-new building, I don't even see any blooming, there's nothing. It's all stripped and pulled, so.
No, there's tons of daffodils out for them, there's tons of them, they're beautiful.
But it's just not, it's what it used to be, is all, and I think that we could do better as a town on that. It does, you can make something very simplistic look. In this budget as well, the Spicer Building, is that, I know there's talk that that place needs improvement, are there CIPs for that or is there anything you guys are doing? What's going on with that?
I believe there was CIP money approved last year and Public Works is, if they haven't already gone out to bid, they will be going out to bid to rehab that building, the exterior of it. It's badly needs painting, the soffits are rotting. So there is, there was money approved in the current fiscal year that we're in.
And then my last question is the, you know, quote unquote, community center. What are we doing there and what in this budget is reflective of that 14%?
I think, I mean, if you're talking about, you know, capital improvements, that's not reflected in this budget, what's?
I'm just looking at anything, maybe some activities or, you know, the 14, I'm trying to see what you may be using to enhance the idea of having a true community center.
Yes, well, that's a whole nother discussion because, I mean, we call this building a community center, it's really programmed recreation space when there's programs taking place. It's not really a community center. But to answer your, your question about what's reflective in this budget tied into the community center, and I think I mentioned this earlier, is we've proposed to increase the number of hours for drop-in programming, there's no charge for that. That cost is, is reflective in this, in this budget. And, I'm trying to think what else. You know, building monitor hours are reflected in this budget, we have somebody in that building when this program's taking place. You know, yeah, I'm trying to think of what else directly reflects.
Talking of my general fund, that's.
Yeah, it's pretty minimal. Most of the expenses associated with operating the community center are in the 3240.
Yeah. Thank you for your clarifying information.
Counsel McBride.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank you for your, your time tonight and support the efforts of the Parks Director. I just have a couple of clarifying questions because I may have missed the votes. Is it safe that there was a point, a half of an FTE in the original budget and now there's an additional one FTE added to the budget, there's one and a half FTEs from the original budget from last year, is that correct? Or, because I know there was some discussion, I wanted to verify that that is correct.
Yes, that is, that is correct.
Okay, and the total increase to the pages in the book was an additional 81,635?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, that represents a 0.3. I just, I do have, I support your reference, I do have some concerns over the 14.3% increase because I, I think such large increases should occur over, you know, a year or two years. I was, I was prepared to look at your budget tonight, maybe make a reduction to a 5% increase and then a 5% increase next year, which would get you back to that 10.965% you had. Because I just think it's not, I, I think we have concerns overall that we're at an 8% increase in the budget, I think it's going to be difficult to pass all these over time and not, not have a dramatic impact to the taxpayer. So, but I appreciate your efforts, I'll save any, any reductions at a later time, thank you.
Counsel Cessary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Berry, how much was the fancy paint machine?
It's a lease for $10,000.
$10,000?
Yes.
And how much of the $25,000 was for playground equipment?
Seven.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I just have a clarifying question.
So we have had two rounds of speaking, I need consensus from the council for a third round.
I'd like to speak for a first time.
Counsel Baumgartner.
Thank you. Good to see you all. For saving some time, I don't want to run through every other point that counselors have made, but I just want to line my remarks with, I think, pretty much everyone who, who stated, you know, how much we appreciate your work, especially during the pandemic. I mentioned before, the Clerk's Office dealt quite a bit with residents, even through the pandemic. And obviously, your services were on the Parks and Rec side, Senior Center side, greatly impacted by the pandemic and, well, you all could have, you know, locked up and in some cases, you did have to shutter some recreation services, you had to because the, the whole globe shut down, but you still kept the doors open for the people who most needed it, in particular, you know, the Senior Center and really piloting the Grab and Go meal program, which has, you know, obviously now continued through even after we've kind of come out of the worst of it. So just want to thank you again for your service to our community. And certainly the, the seniors who, I mean, I just rave and rave about your, or I should say rave about your, your services. And certainly on the, you know, the park side and the recreation side, you know, seeing the programs that are starting to develop over at the, the center and certainly, you know, your department's, you know, support for continued investment in our open spaces. I, I don't think in my. I don't think in my time, my short time, you know, involved, that I've seen such a commitment from really your department to, you know, fund departments, fund positions to maintain these properties and to grow the number of properties that are under your stewardship, even when resources are kind of dwindling. So truly thank you. I will be supporting the full-time position as well, and supporting the new number on the floor. My only question is really just to kind of give a, if we can, the public or myself can get an explanation on the 3240 account? Kind of when it came to be, why there are changes? I know you talked about it a little bit, but if you can maybe summarize it one more time?
Sure. Well, I think Jerry might be able to better answer this question, because he's been around a little bit longer than I have, and he was here when it was originally started.
Yes, the 3240 account is a, commonly referred to as a special revenue account. So the, that account really doesn't directly impact taxpayers. The money that people pay, is this working, by the way?
Yes.
The money that people pay for our programs, or to come into the Senior Center for programs, that money goes in and that pays for all the, kind of the direct-type expenses that relate to the programs. Over the years, and it started, I think, in 2004, 2005 was when the special revenue fund first started. Over the years, we demonstrated an ability to generate excess revenue by doing that. And so, over the 15 years, a number of things were shifted into the special revenue fund out of the taxpayer, out of 1064, which is the general fund. So we shifted expenses, things like recreation software, paying for publications, building monitors, you know, things that weren't even refinishing floors in the thing, custodial services, cleaning restrooms, all kinds of things were shifted out of the taxpayer-funded account into the special revenue fund account. And we were successful in generating that excess revenue that allowed us to continually shift things out of the taxpayer-funded account into a fee-funded account. And you heard Director Berry at the beginning talk about, you know, we were pay-to-play. That's the pay-to-play model. People paid, and we took that money, and we invested it, and did some other things. But, you know, we, over 15 years, you get too focused on that, and you end up serving a certain segment of the population. Also, what happened during the COVID pandemic, when people stopped paying us those fees, we still have to pay for maintaining the restrooms, for paying for the software, for, you know, all of those things that had been shifted over the years. And as the director said, that had a catastrophic effect on the special revenue fund. We had a fund balance in hundreds of thousands of dollars that would continue, you know, ensure that that fund was sustainable over time, and, you know, we were comfortable, and we managed it well. The COVID pandemic decimated that, and we have, you know, no fund balance. And that really puts us in a position where we need to push some of those things back into the general fund, and to kind of get back to a position where that fund is sustainable. So it really, you know, the pandemic was really catastrophic for us. So I hope that explains it, but the special revenue fund over the, in normal years, were very, very successful, very well managed, and saved the taxpayers millions of dollars over those 15 years. And right now, though, I mean, the pandemic brought out, you know, it highlighted the potential risk of doing business the way that we chose to do business.
Mr. Mayor, how am I for time?
You have a minute 10 left?
All right, excellent. So the 3240 account, it is still a special revenue account, we're not doing away with it. It was brought up earlier about ARPA utilizing, is that an area where we could potentially replenish what was lost? Not likely. No. So, I mean, how can we, as a council, rebuild up that fund balance?
Well, first of all, you'll see under the other account that, for one thing, there's, we discussed it last year, we knew there was going to be, it was going to be in the red, and we said, let's ride it one more year, see if. We were hoping COVID would bounce back, of course, you know, over this last year. It got further in the hole. We spent significant time internally with HR, with finance, going through this, what's the solution? So one thing is, we have to fill that hole, we have to, you know, get back up, you know, to where we need to be in a little bit of a cushion. So you'll see that in another fund, coming from a contribution from other funds. But then we have to make structural changes, so you don't just keep, you know, because we're not back up yet for this, you know, for the activity. So if you don't make structural changes, you could fill the hole, but you're going to keep going backwards, because you haven't made any changes. So this is two pieces, we're going to make structural changes. Now, someday, you know, let's say it bounces back in two years, and it's going, we can relook at it and see what percentages make sense, so.
Yeah, I was going to say, our intention is to grow that fund back, and hopefully, over time, shift some of those expenses that the town manager is speaking to back into 3240. So this is, I'm not going to sit here and say, you know, we can do this in 18 months. You know, there's another variant of COVID that's coming around, and we don't know what the impact is going to be. But our goal is to get back to a position where, like I said earlier, we can shift some of those expenses back in and continue to run the 3240 count like we've done successfully for the last 15 years.
You're awfully too humble. Thank you.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just to follow up on Counselor Baumgartner's mark. On page 160, is that the 260,755? Is that the money that you moved to?
Yes.
To build, that's the amount you were in the red, and you've gone to?
Right, and that will kind of get us, like.
Fill the hole and get a little tidying.
And get us a little bit of a cushion, right.
And you'll see that in the 1073 fund, when you get there, it's the, I don't want to go too deep, but it's the first item you'll see under 1073.
Okay. So that's how much it kind of, what COVID did to us? And do you see a trend? I mean, is it sort of, is it starting to come back up?
Well, I think it's a little too early to say. I think we're starting to see more people, I know certainly at Thrive 55, we're seeing more people coming. Our summer camp registration is coming up. You know, so those kinds of things, I think, will be a good indicator of where we're headed. Now, I do want to say that, you know, we may be coming back here next year and going through the same exercise, hopefully not for the amount that's been proposed, but we may be coming back to say, hey, you know, we reduced our expenses. This fund gets managed to what we have for revenue. So if we don't have the revenue to do it, we don't make that expenditure, so. But I did want to say, like, you know, Mr. Watkins said, right, you know, there's some things that we're paying for that we have to pay for whether we've got one person or 100 people in a class, and that's like software registration and things like that. So my point is, we may be coming back and saying, you know, we've reduced that amount to, we may need 50,000 just to get us back to zero. But our long-term goal is to get back to where we're not having to come to the council and make that type of request.
I would say, just from my, taking my ukulele and guitar classes here, the turnout is triple what it was over the last two years. So there's many, many people starting to come back, and I hear that in other classes. So there's, I think as people are becoming more and more comfortable, they're coming in and, you know. So I think it's, hopefully, we're in the right direction here.
Yes, we certainly hope so, too.
I'd like to put a new number on the floor.
What's your motion?
Can you repeat?
Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Moved by Casiri, seconded by Parker, 2,4566. Do you want to speak to your motion?
Yes, please, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is taking away 25,000 from the operating expenses, because from what you indicated to me, Mr. Berry, we've got $17,000 of just equipment use that potentially could be used ARPA money for. I'm thinking of your paint machine, thinking of maybe playground equipment. And so if we could potentially use ARPA money for some equipment, I think that would be a little bit more palatable than the 14% increase, and gets us back close to that 9% increase, 9.7% increase.
Counselor Bordaloon?
Thank you, how much does the lift machine cost?
9,000.
Another 9,000? I guess my, just making sure my numbers are correct, maybe to the town manager and the finance director, what percent would that be, like in between the nine point and the, where are we looking with that? I mean, is that really going to change that 14 that much? Because if I remember correctly, to, my battery's dead, I think. My battery's dead, but I love what's there.
12.9%.
Right. It takes a lot to really, to get it close back to the 9%. Like it's, the numbers really, I'm trying to guess what I'm trying to say. What is it that, I mean, is that possible to move those in? Would those qualify?
Well, we're looking at taking that up to 10,000, or 10,000, $10 million of revenue replacement allowance. It's actually, you know, 8.6 million for us. That gives you broader flexibility. However, paperwork, you know, you have paperwork, I'm not sure it's worth it for that little amount. You'd be making, we'd want you to make a decision today, you're going to bypass the ARPA process that's set up, and actually dedicate it then, tonight, to this, to be bypassing that.
I don't understand how we'd be bypassing that, I guess, I'm confused.
Well, unless you're just going to risk it and put it through the normal process we're doing for ARPAs now?
I mean, quite frankly, I, I mean, I guess what I, I can't speak for Counselor Casiri, I'll speak for myself. I guess what I'm thinking is, these are great items to have in, you know, like, but we're staring down a barrel under the last thing we were looking at possibly. Once again, if you cut the number, that doesn't mean you're cutting people's salaries. That's up to you guys to go back and pow-wow after we move those numbers. The question is, can we take a 25,000, we've got to look somewhere, everyone has to be willing to. We can't just, if everybody comes up here with their requests, and we request everything at 100%, then we're not doing our job necessarily either. Our job is to go through the budget and find cost savings and ways in which we can do this. So making these items possibly come out, and I can respect what one of the previous counselors was trying to do, and move the number down a few percents from that 14, which is now helping an employee, you know, now you guys can hire that full-time union worker without it being a 14% or over 14%. So we have to be willing. Maybe this is not the year to purchase, though, it's a great idea, I like the lift, I like the line machine, but maybe not in this year, right? Like you said, we just took a hard hit. So this is a low-hanging fruit of something that we don't have, that maybe we can maybe go without. Is that possible? I don't think it's appropriate to say, oh, absolutely, tonight, we're going to earmark that under the ARPA funds. I think that would be kind of inappropriate in some ways, but we could talk about it when we get to that. That would be my thought. I also think, I mean, I don't want to move a number that's frivolous either, but I also think we should subtract that 9,000 out. Take that 25, and make this $34,000 less. And, you know, I mean, it's peanuts, right? When you're looking at this budget, I mean, $34,000 is really not a lot when we start going down the salaries. But we have to be willing to take something. And that's not taking away programs or jobs, which is a goal of mine. So we're not, we're making it a little harder, but we've been doing without it for many years. It's a luxury item, as I say. You know, do you want the heated seats, or do you want the leather interior? It's nice to have, but we haven't had it, so if we can hold off another year, we can bring it on versus cutting something else when we're bringing on a full-time position. So it's not cutting any programs, is that correct? By not getting the?
Counselor's time has expired, thank you.
The light, the line machine, the lift, would not cut anybody's salary?
No, it doesn't cut anybody's salary, but there was a discussion earlier about how we used to plant bulbs and do things like that. With the autonomous paint machine, you've got another 240 hours to paint, to plant bulbs, and make Groton a more attractive place, so.
And just to point out, even with this one and a half positions extra, that doesn't fill the gap by any means. There's still going to be later years when we ask for more to get back up there.
Thank you, Counselor Franco?
Thank you, I'm not in favor of taking away the liner, as you stated, it was 240 hours, man-hours, that an employee can be working somewhere else while this does the work for them.
And there are, there are a couple of other benefits, one, it's electric, so we wouldn't, we'd be using less gas. And also, we'd have to see after the first year, but I believe we'd be using less paint, because with a manual-driven machine, it's not a constant, you know, they go faster, they go slower. With the autonomous paint machine, it would be a steady application of paint. So I believe that we would potentially save on paint also.
Right, and if you take 240 hours and you dump it by 40, that's six weeks of work.
Yes, right.
I mean, that's huge in the summer, that's potentially one of your seasonal employees, basically, you know, helping, helping you out while you need it, because you're not getting the applications, so. So I think that's sort of cutting off your nose despite your face, in essence. So I can't, I don't want to take away the liner, so thank you.
Okay.
Seeing no other discussion, we will vote on the second amended number, which is 2 million. Counselor Bordaloon?
Thank you. Would it be frivolous if I moved the budget down to 34,000?
We have, we have three on the floor.
I'm asking a question, if one was to get voted down, and you're allowed with the process from all the years of doing the budget, you're allowed to then add another item on. So I'm asking a clarifying question. Would it be considered frivolous, if one motion was voted down, to add also, to make it 34,000, to include the lift at this time? Once again, I'm.
So what would be your number?
I would just cut it down another 3,000 off of, I didn't have a quick, because I was doing, I had a microphone issue, so I haven't done everything up. But I'm just asking, would that be considered a frivolous motion, before I?
Uh, no. Okay.
I'm going to, so I have to wait, right, we have two on the floor?
Yes.
And we can only have, we can have up to three on the floor, right?
We have three on the floor.
Correct. We have two amended, so that's three total.
There's, so can you restate what motions are on the floor for my record, please?
So the first one we're going to vote on is 2,4566. The first amended is 2,29,566. And the original number is 1,946,968.
Okay, thank you, so I have to wait for one to fall off before I can add it, thank you.
So we will vote on the second amended number, which is 2,4566. Counselor Bordaloon, how do you vote? 566.
Is that the original, that's the one by Counselor Casiri?
Correct.
I would vote in favor. Thank you.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Uh, no.
Counselor Casiri?
Yes.
Counselor Franco?
No.
Counselor Jones?
Uh, no.
Counselor McBride?
He's got kicked off, he's trying to get back on.
Okay. Counselor Parker?
No.
Counselor Westerveld?
No.
Melendez will be in no. And we'll just note Counselor McBride has lost connection. So he's not present. So that fails, two in favor. Bordaloon Casiri. Six opposed, none abstaining.
Mayor Melendez?
Yes.
I probably. I probably, I mean, at this rate, if they're not, no one's willing to budge on that, me going 9,000 lower would be frivolous, in my own opinion, so it would be a waste of time, it seems.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we will vote on 2,29,566. Counselor Bordalon, how do you vote?
I just want to make sure, because it's, once again, this sheet and all my notes are now different from what I prepared for a week ago. This number we're doing is the new number with the new full-time position.
And the maintainer, correct.
And the what, I'm sorry?
The maintainer and changing the non-union position to the main, the union position.
Okay, and the last number on the floor is the what, the starting number that was originally in our book? Are we allowed to ask a question?
Just to mention, David McBride is now back on.
Okay, thank you. We just have to vote.
Yeah, because I, because in between, I'm just, I'll vote in favor of this number.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Uh, yes.
Counselor Cassieri?
Yes.
Counselor Franco?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor McBride?
He's on there.
And just so you know, we're voting on 2,29,566.
He's muted right now. At his choice. I've asked him to unmute. I can't do it for, I forget.
Can we please move on?
That's because he hasn't answered.
There you go.
He's unmuted. Okay, now he is.
I, I did unmute, can you hear me? I was in.
Yes.
Sorry for the delay.
Yes, we can hear you. We're voting on 2,29,566. Thank you. Counselor Westerveld? And Melendez is a yes.
Yes, hello.
Oh, sorry. Counselor Parker? Okay, that carries nine in favor, zero opposed, zero standing.
We're going to see some bulbs now, right? Some flowers?
Yes. The automated, the automated paint machine does bulbs, too.
That would be awesome.
That would be.
Yeah, we'll take a, we'll take a 10-minute recess, we'll be back at 8:26. Okay, see no other discussion, I'll call for a vote on taking the restriction away of two rounds of speaking, plus a consensus thereafter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Counselor McBride, how do you vote? Counselor McBride, how do you vote?
Aye.
May probably better do a little call.
Counselor Bordelon, how do you vote?
In favor.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counselor Cassiri?
Nay.
Counselor Franco?
No.
Counselor Jones?
No.
Counselor McBride?
His arms put his music.
Right. Counselor Parker?
No.
Counselor Westerveld?
Yes.
Okay, so. We have three in favor, Bordelon, Baumgartner, Westerveld, five opposed, and we have an abstention from McBride.
It's not abstention, just it would be eight people voting, right, no vote.
Okay, three, it fails three to five to zero. All right. On to Shenandoah Golf Course, page one fifty-four in your budget books. I make a motion for one million four hundred seventy-four thousand five hundred and three dollars.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Parker. And we have Director Barrett here again.
So, as we did with the one oh six four budget, I just want to give a couple of highlights for the Shenandoah Golf Course. We've, COVID has been a bright spot for golf. We have played the most number of rounds that we have in the last ten years, tremendous increase in membership and also diversity of membership. We hosted the Connecticut Senior Open, which attracts one hundred and thirty-six players annually from more than thirteen different states. We were ranked as one of the top one hundred value courses in the country and ranked as one of the top five municipal courses in New England. And just as a reminder for those that aren't familiar with this particular fund, this is a special revenue fund that pays for all costs associated with operating the golf course.
Just not CIPs.
With the exception of CIPs, and I'll just repeat that. This pays for all costs. So this includes health insurance, OPEB, and retirement, all of those costs. So there's no impact to this budget to the general fund until the taxpayers. So this, the budget is up, personnel costs are up, and operating costs are up. Personnel costs are up because of a, we're proposing to take that, thanks, take that point-five position and make it a one-point-oh. That's that person that splits their time between parks and the golf course. So there's the additional cost of that, social security costs associated with that increase. We hire seasonal staff, the Connecticut minimum wage keeps going up, and so we have to pay our seasonal staff more money. Retirement went up, and health insurance went up by twenty-five thousand dollars. Operating expenses, those increases, we are, we've come up with a capital asset replacement plan for all of our equipment. You know, we program out how long the life expectancy is and what we need to budget. This year, we need to replace a triflex tea mower. Other increases to the operating budget are rising fuel prices, the rise in cost of materials and supplies. We lease our golf carts, and we're at the end of our current lease, and next year we'll be bringing in new golf carts. And the amount that we have to pay annually is increasing, I think about eight thousand dollars. So that reflects a change there. And also, just maintenance associated with aging equipment are the reasons for the increases in the operating budget.
Thank you. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Barry. I just, looking at the page one fifty-five, if I'm reading this right, your total cost entries was one million four hundred and seventy-four thousand five hundred and three, and the total financing plan was one million four hundred and ninety-one thousand. So you have a seventeen thousand, I guess, profit?
Yes.
So do you put that into some type of future capital improvement fund, or what do you do with that extra money?
Yeah, we have to, Director Landry may be able to help. I'm not sure if this is a state mandate, but we have to set aside a certain amount of money in order to, if there was some kind of a catastrophic event at the golf course, if an airplane decided to use one of the fairways to land, and we had to close the car, close the golf course, we have to maintain a certain amount of operations. I think, I can't remember if it's sixty or ninety days, it might be sixty days. So the money gets set aside into a fund for that purpose.
So this, this money would go directly into that?
It would, yes.
Where does that fund sit now? I mean, does it accumulate year after year, or is it?
It does, yes.
Though there's been times it's been very low.
Yeah.
COVID's been great for the golf course, though.
Yeah, I mean, we had, you know, we kind of live and die by the weather, and we had, I think it was FYE nineteen, it might have been eighteen, we had, I think it was thirteen weekends in a row where it rained either Saturday or Sunday. And, you know, if a golfer misses a day of golf, he doesn't play two rounds the following day. So you lose that, and you never get it back. And that year, we ended up, we had, over the course of ten years, built up a fund balance of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That year, we completely wiped out that fund balance.
So it's, it's just specified for that purpose? You can't, if it, let's say you built up a hundred and fifty days worth of time, you can't take that out and buy a lawnmower with it or something. You use it to keep the operation going?
Yeah, I believe that we could, we could do that.
You could dip into it if you wanted to.
We could, right.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have you guys thought about, like, some other neighboring towns with golf courses have done other outreach programs besides golfing to bring in revenues? Have you guys thought about doing any weddings, or, you know, renting out, like, when it's not as heavily used later? People, like, you know, you look at Langley's in Waterford and stuff, they have a broader, you know, outreach, just, it's not just the golf course. It's, they bring in, people have retirement parties there, they have other things. Is that more driven just by the restaurant? But, you know, is there any way to kind of support some other events there that we are, be able to bring in a positive revenue on?
The par four is, that is leased, and so they manage how that facility is run. I don't believe that we have in our lease agreement any authority to say you have to do weddings or anything like that. So-
They do rent it out for a variety of purposes.
They do, right. But they, they have done some weddings. I think the layout of the building and its proximity to the course doesn't lend itself well. There's not a whole lot of distance that you could safely put, say, a tent out without worrying about any of the people attending the wedding or whatever kind of function. Because of its proximity to the, to the golf, to playing part of the golf course, there'd be a safety concern.
So. Is there any fees associated with trying, and at one point you guys were looking to get this as, you know, on the historic?
Yeah, there, there is no money in this budget for going through that process of becoming on the historic register. The golf advisory board, that's not something that they're in favor, in favor of. They don't see, it doesn't really enhance, you know, the value of playing at the course by being, you know, a historic building. So there's, there's no real value. The fact that it's a Donald Ross course doesn't really impact a lot of, we do a survey every two years, and one of the questions we ask is, you know, is the historic nature, that the fact that it's a Donald Ross designed course have any influence on your decision to play here? And I, I think like eighty-five percent of the people say, no, we don't really care that it's a Donald Ross course. So they didn't see any value in expending, I can't remember the amount, it was at least twenty thousand dollars to, it's a really extensive process, and a lot of places that go through this process will pay a consultant to do that, and they just didn't feel like that was worth the money. They would rather spend that twenty thousand dollars on the, on the course itself to improve the player experience, but putting a plaque up on the side of a building saying this is a historic building doesn't really any, add any value to the golf experience.
All right, I see no other discussion. So I'll call for a vote on one million four hundred seventy-four thousand five hundred and three dollars. Counselor Bordelon, how do you vote?
Favor.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counselor Cassiri?
Yes.
Counselor Franco?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor McBride? I will move on. Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Westerveld?
Yes.
Melendez is yes. That carries eight in favor, zero oppose, zero abstaining. Thank you. All right, on to recreation and senior activities on page one fifty-nine. I'll make a motion for one million two hundred twenty thousand eight hundred and four dollars.
Second, Bordelon.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Bordelon. Director Barrett?
So we discussed this fund a little bit earlier this evening, and just as a reminder, it is a special revenue fund. As Mr. Locken explained, it covers the direct costs associated with running the programs, instructor fees, materials and supplies, brochure printing, mailing, credit card processing fees, software maintenance, facility monitors, and equipment replacement associated with the different programs. The proposed budget on the personnel side is decreasing, and that is due to a couple of factors. One, the fact that we had discussed earlier, moving some of the folks that were in three-two-four-oh, moving them into one oh six four. We're, there's also going to be a decrease in seasonal personnel. Previously, we had run summer camps in more than one location. This year, we're going to be operating out of one location. So we don't need camp directors at each site. We've got one site where we'll have a camp director. So that's pretty much the, the explanation for the decrease in the personnel side. Operating expenses are scheduled to increase. We're, the cost of, part of the summer camp program includes busing to events. The cost of busing has gone up considerably. So that cost is included in there. We have some aging fitness equipment here in this building that we're proposing to replace. One of the things that the Thrive staff did during the pandemic is they took some of the programs that were being offered inside, and they moved them outside. There's equipment associated with offering those programs outside, and we're proposing to put a shed next to the shed that we already have out by the, the hockey rink, in order to keep that equipment out there, so that they can easily move that equipment into the hockey rink. We've had exercise classes out there with, you know, forty people inside, and the response was so positive that people want to continue to do that when the weather's nice. So we're, we're planning on doing that. As everybody knows, when they go shopping for food, the cost of food is going up, so we've increased the, the food budget. And there's also a couple of pieces of equipment that we want to replace. There's a, not a walk-in fridge, it's a-
Reaching.
Thank you. A reach-in refrigerator that is broken. We've got a coffee machine that doesn't work, and so that, we've put that in here. And again, I want to remind folks that, you know, if, if we don't have the money to do these things, we're not going to buy it. So even though the shed is in there and we need the shed, is, as we move through the next, you know, the next fiscal year, if we find that the revenue just isn't what, what it needs to be in order to cover those costs, we're not going to make that purchase. So, you know, it, yeah. So that's, that's kind of where we are with this, with this fund. And as John mentioned earlier, if you look at the financing plan, if there is a, payments from other funds, for two hundred and sixty thousand seven hundred and fifty-five, that is a contribution from the general fund to get us back to zero with a little bit of cushion.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We received a number of emails and had people come out and speak on preserving the programs at the, at Thrive fifty-five. I'm not sure, they didn't speak to any specific programs or to say why they came out to say support services and support the budget. Are there any programs or services that are being cut that caused those people to come out and, and speak to us, or was it just a general, they just came to say?
Yeah, I, I think it was just general, that we're not planning-
There wasn't anything specific that they were-
I think it may have been just because of the change where the money was coming from, that could have been, you know, that could have been a little confusing.
Yeah, the, the position that we discussed earlier tonight, that was a thirty-hour regular part-time, non-union position. You know, as we go through this process, if the council had made a decision that they weren't going to fund that, the change from the thirty-hour non-union FTE to a thirty-five-hour union employee, that, that program, that person runs some particular programs, and if that position was no longer there, those programs would go away. So-
They also mentioned the two part-time food workers where their funding was switched over to the-
Oh, okay.
Funding for two part-time, the food workers, if you remember, that was mentioned a few times. That funding was moved into the general fund. I think that's what triggered it also.
Right. So again, yeah, if those positions hadn't been funded, you know, I guess one of the options would have been to put it back into the special revenue fund. But I can assure you, we'd be back next year saying, hey, we need more money because, you know, we're taking steps to try to generate more revenue. One, one of the things that, that we've done is, the Cove out front now, we serve coffee and Danish four days a week, and that, we've actually seen an increase in revenue of breakfast sales, because we've got volunteers that are out there that are serving coffee, they're charging for it, and Danish and whatnot. And so we're taking steps to try to generate more revenue. We have had to raise prices for the food. It was mentioned earlier, the grab-and-go, that's been a huge success. We did that a number of years ago, and that continues to take place, and people are taking advantage of that.
Okay. So I mean, this is a enormous resource for the community, and we have a higher level of senior citizens and older citizens here in Groton than some of the surrounding areas. So keeping this strong is important. So mostly what they're picking up is you're just moving some of the- So mostly what they're picking up is you're just moving some of the pieces around, reorganizing, but the, the dollars are still the same, the programs are still the same?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, okay, great, thank you.
Counselor Bordelon?
Thank you. It's my understanding as well that the programs at the senior center are open to people under 55 if the classes don't fill. Is that correct? And I think that's something that should be stated to the public, and it's not, not saying you don't do it, but I don't think it's stressed enough. I found this out myself a couple of years ago, and then COVID came, because I was looking to join a few programs when I had, my schedule was different at that time. And I found out that a friend of mine's parents said, you know, come down to the yoga class at the senior center, and I said, I'm not 55, and I, like, was kind of offended, and she said, no, join me, it's great, and if the class is not full. So I think that's a great asset to have. I mean, we look at parks and rec, but Thrive 55 is, you know, meant for a certain population, but, you know, we can fill those classes. And so my question is, is there any more advertising possibly that we can do to help drive maybe some of those revenues when you notice a class is not filling? Or is there anything you can put on? I know I sometimes get stuck on the channel that, you know, talks about the programs, but is there any more incentive to talk about that, maybe a little bit more bold, that you, that we could maybe help drive these item lines and bring in more revenue to support? Because I think this budget looks great. I think, out of all the budgets that's presented, it's a very low increase you guys are asking. I, I think this program served. I brought a neighborhood, community person in here, the, I think, and he hasn't fully come yet, but I, you had trouble filling, after his, you know, medical condition, filling out the application, and everybody was very helpful, and I sat with him at a table and helped him fill out the form, and, you know, was trying to get him pumped to kind of come down here, but, so I think you guys do an amazing job. I mean, it really has. And some other folks that have reached out to me in the community had said, not just from email, but just how much it meant to them to have this connection during COVID when it was, you know, kind of everything was shut down, and this was the only thing in town. But my point or my question, looking at the revenues, how much involvement are you guys getting that's affecting this budget for under 55?
We get a, a small amount. About 10 to 15% of the people that come here are non-residents, and they're non-resident seniors, and I would say we probably get 1% or 2%. Our daytime, especially our daytime fitness classes are packed with seniors, and, and the residents are like, don't advertise to other people. But it's more the evening. We lost several instructors, actually, we lost a lot of our instructors during COVID because they had to get other jobs. And so we are just building back with new instructors and new programs, so hopefully we'll get back to a full line of, we, we were open five evenings a week and Saturday mornings, so now we're trying to get back those evening and weekend times. So we are advertising. One of the best ways is through our trips program, and that's open to anyone. Travel wasn't being done, but we have, like, four huge trips planned, you know, national parks, southern trips, a couple of European trips for just this year, and four more for next year planned. That's where we bring in a lot of revenue, but that also lets us, like, if a younger adult comes along with a parent or something, and we start to say, oh, you can come and dig zumba in the evening, or our strength training in the evening, that's where we try to pick up people through there. We don't really advertise it much, but we can, because we're, we don't want to compete with our own department, because he offers programs.
And for the last two years, year and a half, we have not printed a Discover brochure because of COVID and trying to be sensitive to the fact of where we're spending our money. We're going to start that again this, for the summer, and one of the things that takes place is the programs that are offered here in this building, a lot of those are in Discover, are in the Discover magazine, and the Discover magazine goes to every household. And, you know, the, the program descriptions include the fact, mention the fact that you don't have to be, you know, and that, you know, this is something that, you know, Mary Jo and I started talking about years ago. Our, our goal was to make, and maybe it was at the time when I wasn't 55 that we started talking about this, is of trying to make people more comfortable coming here, so that when you, when you hit 55, it wasn't like, oh, God, I'm not going to the, well, it used to be called the senior center, because I'm not a senior. You know, what we wanted people to, we wanted people to feel comfortable, because, yeah, I've taken three or four classes there, and, and that's kind of one of the reasons we also went through this whole rebranding, was because people didn't like going to a senior center.
Thank you so much for answering that, and I think that's, really just shows the recreation and 55 activities above and beyond, and I think that's a great selling point and asset to our community when we look at parks and rec, and we look at the senior center. We really do have a broad thing, because even though there were classes that I saw at the senior center that fit my schedule, that I couldn't fit in at the parks and rec, so that won't limit them, because I wasn't able to do those, but if I could possibly get into your program, it opens that broad, you know, spectrum of opportunities, so. And with our community center still in flux, this is another functioning kind of community center in some aspects, so I, I think this is a great budget. I think you guys did a great job. You provide a lot of great services, and I think, thanks for all the things that you do do, and it looks really good, and coming down and seeing the efficiency. One question I did have, that I did hear from someone, and they were saying something about the computer to log in when you get here wasn't working, or the computer, is the computers down at the senior center? Are they broke, or?
No, it's really, go ahead.
Yeah, so we're, we're aware of that situation, and we're actually in the process of looking at other software. The software that we use right now has a lot of great benefits, but one of them is not, it's not particularly user-friendly, and so we're actually looking at making the change, and, yes, the issue that we have with the check-in screen would be addressed if we switch software.
Okay, thank you, and that, and this budget will be able to support to do that?
Yes, there's money in, there's a line item, or, there's money in here for software.
Perfect, thank you so much for answering that.
Counselor Jones?
I'll just reinforce or emphasize the same thing that Counselor Bordelon just said. As a user of that check-in computer, I will echo its, its difficulty, and the, the way we do it now, where we just sign our name, sign our phone number, and put the class, and we move on, is so much more efficient than that. And then the other thing I'll say is, so I've been a resident here for just over five years, and the senior center was one of the places, when we moved here, we knew absolutely nobody in the town of Groton when I moved here, and this place was one of the places we came to meet people and get engaged in the community and start taking classes. So my wife and I both have used this center a lot, and it was a great place to come when you, when you don't know anybody, it's a great place to enter into, into Groton. So just thank you for running great programs and doing all the great stuff, so.
Thank you. All right. See no other discussion. I'll call for a vote on $1,220,804. Counselor Bordelon, how do you vote?
In favor.
Counselor Baumgardner?
Yes.
Counselor Cassiri?
Yes.
Counselor Franco?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Westerveld?
Yes.
Melendez is a yes. And Counselor McBride?
I don't believe he's here, but he's on, he just, it's not letting him unmute for some reason.
Okay, so that's eight in favor, zero oppose, zero abstaining. So that, that carries. Thank you. And I don't believe we have any other business, so we will recess at 9:02.